Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, August 4th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of Moscow's City Council. Gina?
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the first, the first city council meeting in August. Pretty exciting, not too hot outside. If you are able, please stand with us and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and this consists of items that have been previously vetted by either the Public Works and Finance or the Administrative Committees, and consists mainly of routine or non-controversial items, and any item can be removed for separate consideration by a member of council.
I move you approve the consent agenda. Second.
Discussion, okay. Haley?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And Bryce?
Aye.
Okay. Sailing along into the regular agenda. Next up is the mayor's appointments, of whom I have none. And item three, public comment. And for the next 15 minutes in three-minute increments, we invite members of the public to come up to the podium, announce your name and where you live. And then, in that three-minute allotment, tell us what's on your mind, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda, nor pending before Planning and Zoning Commission, nor coming up before the Board of Adjustment. Otherwise, any takers?
Evening, I'm Jim Park, I live at 403 East A. And the last time I was here, I talked to the council about the various vehicles that are now on the streets and sidewalks of Moscow. And that's still an issue, but I have a slightly different tact this evening. And if the council would indulge me, I'd like to take a quick hand-raising vote of who has ridden a bicycle or some other alternative form of transport into Moscow, around Moscow this week.
Past seven days' week?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One more time?
Past seven days' week, yeah.
It's your past seven days. Let's see those hands one more time. I saw one, two, three, four. Pretty good showing. How many thought about it this week and decided they would give it a pass because they thought it was too dangerous? Or they didn't know a route that was safe? Any takers on that one? Well, that's pretty good. Anyway, I ride my bike in Moscow a lot, and I've found the routes in Moscow to be difficult. They're not very well marked, and I'm sure there are many people in Moscow who will not ride a bike because they don't feel comfortable riding in the street. Some people opt for riding on the sidewalk, which I think is ridiculous. I saw a family of five riding down the sidewalk, Third Street sidewalk, heading into the farmer's market this Saturday, and that's not a place for bicycles. Anyway, I would like to encourage the city council to work harder at making it feasible for folks to ride their bikes, or whatever they happen to be on. And to that end, it would be great if there was a citizen group that could give the city, the city council input, or whoever gets that kind of input, because there are lots of bicycles out there who would love to have a safer place to ride and just how to get around Moscow. So there you go. That's my comment for this evening.
Thank you very much. Yes?
If it's all right. When I was on the transportation, not transportation, part, part, park.
Pathways Commission?
Pathways Commission. They actually put a map together, and it was at the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if it still is, but they, they worked to put a map together about safe bike routes, flow, some good places on all parts of town where bicycles had a nice, safe path to go, and gave different options. So I know that that was a commission that's now part of the Transportation Commission that has been working on that.
And additionally, Streets has been putting in bike lanes to the extent possible. If the roads are wide enough to accommodate bike lanes, just need to get people off the sidewalks and into the bike lanes to use them. We're topographically constrained about how many separated pathways we can put in. The Paradise Path exists, but it's not complete, but we do have it in mind at all times as we bring in new development and redo streets. So we're trying to claw back to getting to non-motorized transportation to the extent possible, but it's a long haul, really is. But we always have it on our minds. Transportation Commission is a good place to start with that and bring that up to them, which, if they don't have an answer right away, it certainly puts it higher up in their minds about keeping an eye on these things and trying to provide for greater access to bike paths, and especially separated from motorized vehicle traffic. So we're working on it slowly, but.
This is a good time of year, too, to, to help new people in town understand how to use the bike lanes and which way to go and things like that.
Yes, please.
Watch, watch out for new people in town that are riding their bikes in interesting ways.
So anybody else want to pop up?
Good evening. My name is Gregory Soderberg. I'm a resident here in Moscow and a member at a local church. I just wanted, just want to thank you, the mayor, and all the members of the city council for their hard work. I know government officials don't usually hear from their constituents unless we're angry or there's a problem, but I just want you to know that our, our church actually prays for you often in our service, as well as other state and, and all of our judges and officials. So we know you have a hard job, and even though I'm sure we would perhaps not agree on everything, we are so thankful for your, your service to our, our city. So may God bless your hard work and give you wisdom and all of the tasks that you have to do for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay. Moving briskly along. Next up, we have a public hearing for the City of Moscow Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, courtesy of Bill Belknap and Sarah Decker, our finance head. And to announce how public hearings work, they're very formal processes as iterated in Idaho State Code. So I open the public hearing. Staff presents the issue at hand. After the staff presents, city council can ask questions of whatever nature they choose. After that, we hear from the public, testimony in favor of, followed by testimony in opposition, followed by testimony of a general nature. After that, the public hearing closes, and council begins their deliberations toward a conclusion on this action. So with that, public hearing is open. Bill, the podium is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. So obviously, we're here to review next year's fiscal year's budget. That'll begin here in October. But the budget is a very important policy action by the council. It is our fiscal plan. It sets out our anticipated revenues and our anticipated expenditures for the operation of the municipal corporation. The city's revenues come from a wide variety of sources. Most people think about property taxes, but honestly, it's about a little bit under 7% in the city's total revenues, but they come from property taxes. We also receive some sales tax that is shared from the state of Idaho to cities and counties. We also charge, obviously, for the services we provide, and we are actively pursuing grants to help fund those capital projects. So we do have a kind of a wide variety of revenue streams. The expenses in the budget, really, while they're numbers on a page, they represent the delivery of the core services to the community, everything from providing police protection to fire suppression, to EMS service delivery, to parks maintenance, to road maintenance. It really is everything that it takes to operate the city, as well as to reinvest in the capital infrastructure that we are charged with caring for. The budget process typically begins about early March, where we start off reviewing our long-term planning documents. So we're looking at our utility plans, our capital improvement plans, identifying those, those longer-term projects we need to be, keep in mind. That moves on then to the department requests, looking at what they need to provide the services their department provides. That transitions on to a review by the finance director through that process, then my review, and then ultimately, a review by the mayor, where we arrive at the proposed budget. We then have the budget workshop that happened earlier in July this year, where we take a day with the council to walk through the budget, what is proposed, make any revisions or amendments. And then, after the workshop, when the council tells us we're ready to move on to the hearing, that's where we are tonight. So this is the, the formal hearing for adoption of the appropriation ordinance. A little bit of backdrop in the budget this year. As the council is aware, in 2024, there was a legal ruling related to finances of municipal governments and how monies can be moved between different sources. Ultimately, that decision, which was down against the city of Lewiston, resulted in us losing some revenues to the general fund, almost 10%, and then nearly 20% to the seats, to the city's street fund. And so we're still contending with that today. At that time, we did eliminate six unfilled positions, issued holdbacks, froze pay increases, and did a number of other measures to help address that shortfall, and those actions still remain today. It has a place to strain on our ability to both provide the operating finances as well as the capital necessary for reinvestment of those capital assets. And really, it is our goal every year to be able to dedicate about 1.5 million towards capital needs. And just in the general fund, non-enterprise, non-utility funds, you know, over the next 10 years, we have about 37 million identified, many in, in the roadway improvement program. The highlights for the budget this year, so all of the positions that were left unfilled in 2024 remain unfilled. We also eliminated administrative executive assistant position that was in administration, and then most recently, in the 2025 budget, that position was shared between administration and arts to help fill some of the loss of resources the Arts Department had when the arts assistant position was eliminated in 2024. We did up a recreation coordinator position that was the 30 hours to full-time. We did that by reductions of part-time expenditures to help, help fill that, so we had more consistent support around the Egan Center and youth programming. We also have a reclassification in the budget for legal assistant to paralegal. We had two positions requested this year that we weren't able to fund, so the fire department requested a student resident program manager. As the council is well aware, we have a very unique fire protection EMS delivery system. It's a partnership between the city and the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, which is a nonprofit entity. Previously, we had three paid administrative positions that were paired with 24 to 28 student residents that staffed the stations primarily during the school year, and then another 60 to 80 volunteers to keep that program going. That student resident program really has been one of the key, I guess, abilities or key determinants that have allowed us to remain a volunteer fire department, probably saving the city between $4 and $5 million per year if we had to go to a fully paid department. So it's important that that program is successful long-term. And, and right now, I think the fire department does need some resources to help make that happen, but they did make that request. We were not able to fund that position this year. We also, the fleet department also requested additional equipment mechanic position. Again, very justified, given the number of pieces of equipment and vehicles we've added to the fleet over the last 20 years, but it was a position we were unable to fund this year. For compensation adjustments for the remaining city employees, the budget includes a 4% cost of living adjustment. Over the past five years, the Consumer Price Index has increased almost 23%, where our, our cost of living increases have been under 16%. So we did add 1%. Traditionally, we follow the CPI. CPI from the prior year, that was 2.9%, so we added 1.1% to that in order to help make up a little bit of what ground we lost when we were unable to pay, provide pay increases here a couple of years ago. It includes the 3% performance, so the vast majority of city's employees honor a pay-for-performance system. That is, their pay increase is based upon their evaluation and their score. It's not just a step-in grade where you spend another year. And so we have budget 3% for the performance piece of increases. And we also have moved our dependent coverage from 60 to 65%. Council is aware that's been a commitment. We've moved it 5% per year for the past three years in order to try to get up to a more comparable 80% coverage, which is all the, our pure cities surrounding us, Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Lewiston and Pullman provide 80% or more of dependent premium coverage. So we're, we're still a little bit behind, but we're making good headway on that front. The, the budget is one of those tools that we use to help address those longer-term issues, what we call our strategic initiatives, and those are broken up into three tiers. Tier one being the most pressing, most, most critical, down to tier three, which are less pressing. So the number one in tier one is to develop an alternate water supply. As everybody knows, the city is dependent upon groundwater. That groundwater is slowly declining. We need to make sure that we have a reliable, long-term supply of water. This budget includes 335,000 to fund the alternate water supply study to explore bringing water up from the Clearwater River as that long-term solution. So we'll be making good strides in advancing that work. Fire and emergency medical staffing services staffing shortage is another tier one issue. And again, this budget continues to fund the three paramedic firefighter positions that we added last year in partnership with the volunteer nonprofit corporation that is funding those positions for the first three years, and then the city will start funding 5% of those positions each year, up to a 80-20 split with a volunteer organization. So that continues as well. We also have the holiday and summer stay-in programs to help provide that coverage when a lot of our student residents may be going home. The substandard emergency communication system, that project, there is no funding in the budget for FY26 because we will be tackling that and completing that project this year. And then, as we move on, remaining tier one, city shop. The deficiency of the city's shop was a tier one item. The budget includes 3 point, almost 3.4 million for completion of what's currently under construction, which is an additional 16,000 square foot facility, as well as renovation to the existing shop to get another 20 years of, of service out of that facility. The inability to recruit sufficient staff to perform essential functions, I think we've made good strides on that front. Police recruitment, we've developed lateral incentives, we've developed signing bonuses, and we have been consistent in doing compensation surveys every two years to make sure that we are paying competitive wage, and we're continuing to work on both that COLA, as well as the dependent care cost that puts us at a bit of a disadvantage. So the budget supports those as we move forward. For tier two items, inadequate funding to properly maintain city streets, the budget before you includes just a little bit over 3 million to fund roadway improvements, including the city service treatment program. We have two transportation alternatives program, TAPM grants, that will be happening on Mountain View for both Mountain View North and Mountain View South to widen the roadway, add bike lane sidewalks. That will bring us from White Avenue essentially all the way up to Solonaker on both sides of the roadway. And then we also have a pedestrian underpass project underneath the south couple intersection of Highway 95 and Highway 8. A deteriorating downtown streetscape and infrastructure is another tier two item. The proposed budget includes 250,000 to begin the design of targeted improvements. As you recall, we went through an effort about a little over a year and a half ago to kind of scope out the improvements we'd like to make to downtown. That became very cost prohibitive, so we're going to go to smaller-scale targeted improvements to address the tripping hazards, ADA compliance issue, to improve lighting downtown, and to look at an event barricade system for the farmer's market and other events that we have that happen downtown. That'll be kicked off this year as well. Preservation enhancement of the urban forest. We currently are working on developing that downtown tree management plan and exploring the ability to expand our resources for urban forest management. And lack of affordable housing, the, the city's Fair and Affordable Housing Commission is looking at potential projects and ways that, that they can help address that situation in the community. And then multimodal transportation and connectivity. As I mentioned, we have the South Main Underpass Project, which will be a significant pedestrian and bicycle facility improvement that will be under construction next year. Moving on to tier three, city gateway aesthetics and beautification. There is a little bit of funding in for landscape design in association with the south couple of underpass. So there'll be, there's kind of that, the old 95 bridge will be removed as part of that project. We'll have the pedestrian, the pathway will dip underneath the bridge structure, come up on that west side. So that, that's an area that is kind of a key gateway as you come in that South Main Hill coming into town. We'd like to do some aesthetic improvements in that location in association with the underpass project. And playfield rehabilitation development. As the council knows, we, we did a joint study with the Moscow School District here that we wrapped up looking at the city's West Plush River Drive property, and we'll kind of see where that project goes in the future. I know the district is currently evaluating their options, and we'll, we expect to reengage this fall in that discussion. And as part of local economic development, we have expanded our partnership with Moscow Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. We renewed that agreement, continue to fund them for services provided to the city in the upcoming year. That will also include them taking over managing the Art Walk program next year. So with that, just kind of start off, take a little bit of, a look at the revenue trends for historical. You know, property tax revenues have been fairly consistent. It is really the one revenue stream that the city has some ability to control because the city is allowed to increase our levy by 3% as a inflationary adjustment to property taxes. So it is one of the few revenue sources that are consistent and that the council can dictate largely how they go. It is limited, you know, 3% is our maximum inflationary adjustment. 8% would be your total maximum if you had, you know, a large new construction that would add to that levy. We'll talk a little bit more about property taxes here in a minute, but that is a fairly consistent and obviously has been growing by that 3% or 4% over the last few years. Sales tax revenue sharing is one that's been a little bit more inconsistent. You can see between 21, FY 2020 and 2021, there was a significant increase in state sales tax sharing. The state redid the formula for distribution at that point in time. The city was probably, on a per capita basis, prior to that formula adjustment, was one of the lowest-funded cities in the state because it really, one of the factors was the assessed valuation of the community. And for us, that is a struggle because about half of the property in town is tax exempt. And so that impacted us significantly. And of all the cities on a per capita basis, we were getting a much lower portion of those state, state sales tax revenues. That formula was updated in 2021, and we saw some growth in that 21 to 23, but that has been flattening off over the last few years. So we don't expect to see significant gains there in the near future. And state liquor sales tax, there is a sheriff's liquor tax. Obviously, in 2021, people were busy. I think during the pandemic, it was a boomer year for sales of alcohol, but it has been on a fairly consistent decline since that time and continues to be on that trend. Construction permits are cyclical, you know, with, with the construction industry and the housing market. 2024 was a pretty significant year, but since that time, we've seen decline. So nothing really, but over the, you know, the last since 2017, it's been relatively flat for, for permit revenue since that time. As I mentioned, you know, property tax is one of those pretty, I guess, more reliable sources for the city for revenues, but we, you know, it does see some significant changes over time. As we prepare for the FY 23 budget, we saw a very significant increase in the assessment of residential values. So in 2022, residential properties appreciated at a much faster rate than commercial properties in town. And as a result, they ended up, you know, becoming a much larger portion of the total valuation of the city and ultimately took a larger share of the burden of property taxes. Many residential properties, specifically single-family residential properties, in that year increased by 40% or more in, in one single year, while many of the other commercial properties grew at a much slower rate. For 2023, for our fiscal year, the levy increase we were proposing at that point in time would have cost a homeowner with a home just under half million dollars, about $63 per year, just for new revenues coming to the city, or about a little over $5 per month. But that value increase meant that that homeowner was paying an additional $298 per year just because of their, their valuation growth. And, and when their value increases and they're paying a larger share, somebody else ultimately ends up paying less because we don't receive any new revenue than what we, what we can increase our levy. We're limited to 3%. So while that homeowner's, you know, annual property tax to the city went up $360 that year, we were only received 63 of new revenue from that homeowner. Somebody else paid $300 less in their property taxes. And I just have some examples to kind of demonstrate that. So at that particular point in time, we had, you know, a fast food restaurant or 120-unit apartment complex, retail building, and a single-family home. And you can see that the 2021 assessed valuation, the property taxes they would have paid in that year, the 2022 assessed valuation, the property taxes they would have paid that year, and kind of the percent valuation growth. And for example, the apartment complex only saw a 2.2% increase in its assessed valuation that year. So their property taxes went down just on the city levy by $7,700 that year, while the homeowner on the bottom, their, their taxes went up to 348. And it just, and it, it just moves depending upon what, what property sector is seeing different valuation growth. In 2022, it was the single-family homes. This year, in talking with the assessor, and you know, the multifamily properties are the ones that are currently significantly undervalued, and some of their sales data indicates that potentially is up to 50% undervalued. So they're going to be moving multifamily up 25% this year. And again, that will shift around essentially who's, who is paying, who is paying what. But it, it's an important note that while that homeowner's property tax bill went up to, you know, 348 in this case, you know, only about 50 of it was new revenue to the city. The 300 was just other people paying less as a whole. Just, it just ended up shifting who paid. And it's been a trend that's been in place since, you know, from 2000 to 2021 on the chart. You know, the, the share in, in 2001 was pretty close. Residential paid about 54% of the tax burden. Commercial was 46, but they've been kind of diverging as that residential market has grown and become a much larger piece, and the valuation has growth that is in, in 2020, it was a 70-30 split between the two markets. So it's not necessarily a new phenomenon. It has been something that's been happening, and the, you know, the homeowner's index, the homeowner's exemption has not been indexed, has been flat other than the one increase here about three years ago. And so because of that, with that growth, the residential market has taken a greater share of that total tax burden. Looking at the city's levy as a whole, this is just a chart. I know you probably can't read the cities. It goes, you know, from Eagle to Mule, Idaho on the bottom, but this is really the city's levy rate. That dash line at just about .004 is the average levy rate for most cities in the state of Idaho. You can see Moscow there with the dark blue line here. Where we, that year, we were about 357, so we were considerably under that average. And then Lewiston really is our closest Idaho city neighbor here on the red line, and their levy that year was essentially almost exactly double our levy that, that year. To compare between us and Lewiston for the 2023 tax year, you know, the assessed valuation for the city of Moscow is about 2.3 billion. For Lewiston's, 3.7. Our populations, we're, we're just a little over 26, they're 34, so about 30% greater population. But their total annual property tax revenue for that year for the city of Moscow for general operations, not looking at bond, for the facilities bond, was 7.3 million, and Lewiston was 23.5 million in revenue that year. So with about 30% greater population, they're receiving about three times, over three times the revenue, and their levy rate this, in that year 23, we were 315, and they were 632. So they're over, over twice our current levy. And that's really, it's, where levies are today are reflective of where they were in the 70s when the 1% and other initiatives came in, and the 3% increases really kind of held those. So it is kind of reflective of, of the past, where your levy was. For FY 26, the budget includes the following property tax adjustments. So we do have our 3% inflationary increase, so that adds about 230,000 to the city's total levy amount. We are proposing to, to go back and take 1% of the forgone. And for those who aren't familiar, you know, you're allowed that 3% inflationary increase. If there are years that the city chose not to take that 3% increase, you can essentially bank those dollars, and you can add them to their, your budget in the future. House Bill 389 passed a couple of years ago, put some limits on how you could add it to your budget. So if it's for ongoing expenses, you can increase your levy by 1%. House Bill three eighty-nine passed a couple of years ago, put some limits on how you could add it to your budget, so if it's for ongoing expenses, you can increase your levy by one percent. If it's for one-time capital expenses, you can go back, you can add three percent to your levy, but then once that capital expenditure or project is complete, it rolls off your tax rolls, so. So the proposed budget does include adding one percent of that foregone and there's about ninety-five thousand left. So after the eighty thousand and change, there'll be about fifteen thousand left in the foregone. And then after that, it'll just be limited to three percent in new construction. The budget does include increasing levy for new construction, so. As stuff is permitted over the course of the year, that gets assessed and has a value, you can essentially take last year's levy rate, you can apply it to that property and you can increase your levy for the next year. By that amount, now you can only levy against ninety percent of that value since House Bill three eighty-nine, so it kind of reduces it, but essentially it's allows you to increase your levy. The same that everybody else is paying for the same, for the same services for that new construction, so new construction can pay for the cost of services to that.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the new construction?
Okay.
Bill, it hits the, the valuation happens when like the certificate of occupancy is issued, right, or like what?
For single family residential, yes, so that, that's when it hits the text, the tax rolls is when a CO is issued.
Great, thank you.
For other larger commercial projects, they'll, they'll take value in progress at the end of the year, so they will start to add a portion of the assessed valuation over time. But for a single family, traditionally it's when a CO is issued.
Ruby, thanks.
And then ninety percent of annexations, so that's about forty-six hundred that gets added to the levy as well, so the, the total property tax increase. To the levy and the levy was just a little bit under eight million last year is three hundred and ninety thousand of new revenue in property taxes. So the total non-exempt levy will be eight million, four thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars will be the levy that's proposed for FY. Twenty-six, the notation there, the seven nine seventy-two, that's what we looked at in the budget workshop. But just, just two weeks ago, after, after the conclusion of the budget workshop, we got the final numbers for the county for new construction, so we were estimating seven, a little over seventy thousand, it came in at one nineteen. The annexation value, we were estimating twenty-five hundred, came in at forty-six, so we had some slight increases of the new construction and annexations that changed since we had the, had the workshop. Just for reference, so we'll be levying eight million for general fund operations, general services, the total police department budget for FY twenty-six will be just a little bit over seven point three million. So virtually the majority of our property tax revenue just goes to fund the police department because it is one of the most expensive general fund operations that the city has. The property tax levy is estimated at three fifty-seven per thousand for assessed valuation, so that means a home with assessed valuation of four hundred thousand. Would see a levy increase from the city of just under sixteen dollars for the year, so a dollar thirty-one per month would be our levy increase on that home and I, and I think home value is going to remain relatively flat this year, so you probably won't see a lot of. You know, shift from appreciation, you may see some, you know, some reduction coming from the multifamily sector value growing, so. Just, you know, under a dollar fifty a month will be the total increase on a four hundred thousand dollar home, when we were looking at the workshop, it was, we were estimating about three fifty per month. But that total assessed valuation grew by about seventy-five million more than what we, we were estimating. It's just, just kind of shows the chart of the tax rates and, and this is largely reflective of the valuation growth, so when valuation grows because we're levying a dollar amount, the rate decreases. And so this just kind of shows brown is our exempt, that is our general fund levy, that's what we, that's the eight million that we levy for providing police, fire, parks and all those services, the blue is the bond debt, so we levy just a little bit over a million dollars a year. That would be paid off in twenty twenty-nine, that was the facilities levy that the voters approved for the new police station and some other facility improvements. But you can kind of see that trend over time. So then here's the total then, so that eight million, four eight forty-two will be the general fund, property tax levy, bond and interest is at one million, forty-seven thousand. So the total levy is nine million, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-two. And as I kind of walk through, we, we have that four hundred thousand dollar home after the Homer's exemption, one twenty-five, leaves, leaves a taxable value of two seventy-five. And they'll see about fifteen dollars and seventy cents per year of tax increase. There is some, you know, the legislature, legislature has continued to provide some property tax relief by funding school facilities. It's kind of an allocation of any surplus and state sales tax collections have been a little bit flat, so we, we don't know what that's going to look like. For any type of relief they provide underneath that mechanism next year. So the budget, so the budget as a whole, so this is all of our revenue sources and, and the one thing that's important to note is we, we do budget our fund balances and that's not necessarily typical. Not every city budgets their fund balances and, and we have some fairly significant fund balances in like the sewer fund because we have very expensive projects coming up. But whether sewer fund, water fund, general fund, capital projects, or sanitation fund. You know, of our revenues, fund balances make up about forty-seven percent, so while the total budget for the upcoming year is a little over a hundred and thirty-nine million. Almost half of that is just fund balances that we've accumulated for these long-term capital projects and we have about a hundred and twenty-one million in capital. Improvements that we have identified over the course of the next ten years across all funds. We had thirty-seven million just in the general fund for streets, parks and general facilities, but when you throw the utilities in there, we've got a total of about a hundred and twenty-one million over the next ten years. But fund balances is the biggest source of revenue, charges for services which are largely utilities, so that twenty-four point five percent is really that next largest source of revenue. Capital transfers are considered revenue, so where you have the water fund transfers to the water capital fund for those future improvements, that gets kind of, we do have some revenues that end up getting booked twice. Yeah, Drew.
I know you're on a roll here, but I just want to ask a quick question, just as a comparison and contrast, so since we budget our fund balance. Cities to the north of us, maybe to the south of us, right? When they don't do that, that's basically not shown in their overall budget, so it makes it look like their budget's much smaller with their operating.
Yeah, and I, next slide, I can tell you that's, it's, it's what that number is.
So ju- just one thing, we get this question a lot, but, and, and the next slide is going to answer this, but we're being very transparent about what we're doing with our money.
We think it is and, and we, you know, every city also structures their, their budgets differently, so for example, like Cordillane, we have a rec and culture fund, so parks. So parks, community events, recreation, the pool, the play fields, all those are in a special revenue fund. It's largely funded by the general fund, we transfer two point eight million dollars to fund those operations in the drone, but it's not in the general fund. So we have to move those monies from the general fund to the rec and culture fund and that ends up being a transfer, so that two point eight million ends up getting counted twice. So for example, Cordillane, parks and streets are just in their general fund, they don't have them in a separated special revenue fund, so. They don't have the transfers that we are making from the general fund to the street fund or from the general fund to the rec and culture fund. It all just sits in the general fund, so you're not counting those revenues twice when you do the transfers, and so yes, we have all of our fund balances in there. We have some, you know, double counting of some revenues because of the transfers. And then it does end up making the budget look a little bit larger than it truly is. And so yeah, capital transfers and operating transfers are the next largest source and then intergovernmental revenues, so those are largely the sales tax sharing. Any grant revenues we receive show up in that intergovernmental line item and then the rest are smaller pieces, so as I mentioned, property tax is about six points, you know, just under six point six percent. The city's total revenue, it is about thirty-nine percent of the city's general fund where property taxes funds most all those general fund activities. But on the city's budget as a whole, it's a relatively small piece. So as I mentioned here, so this is just kind of shows the actual numbers percentage, and so our fund balance for capital projects is sixty point seven million. So that one thirty-nine, if we weren't budgeting fund balance, you could take sixty point seven million out of that. And that would really show maybe a more comparable number without having our fund balances in, into that. And so where do they go, as we're, fund balances are a lot of capital, you, you know, we have almost fifty percent then sits or fifty-four percent sits in capital expenditures. So you have either general government capital outlay or you have enterprise fund capital. And that's not necessarily, we're not spending all that in that one year, but that is the ending fund balances, so we bring in our beginning fund balances, our capital reserves. And then we budget and forecast what our ending fund balance is going to be for the budgeted balance, so. Both of those expenditure, both those categories include actual expenditures in the projects, their three million we're putting into roadways. As well as whatever the fund balance is going to be at the end of the year and I'll, I can share more about that here as we go along. Public safety is probably our next largest piece, so that's police and fire at eight point six percent of the city's total budget. The utilities run six to seven percent of the city's total budget. We have two internal service funds, fleet and information systems that provide services to all city departments, so they're treated as an internal service fund. General government is about six point two one percent of the total expenditures. I just those numbers in table format. And then on the general fund, so this is where we provide police, fire, parks, recreation and all of those activities. The largest piece of the general fund, so the general fund is just over twenty point six million this year, which is relatively flat with last year. Police department is that most expensive operation at thirty-five point six percent of the total budget, the next largest is non-departmental because that's where all our transfers sit. So the two point eight million that we transfer to the rec and culture fund or the million that we transfer to the capital projects fund or. All of those types, types of larger transfers sit in the non-departmental and so that's why that one ends up being about twenty-five percent of the total general fund. And then you can kind of see the remaining departments, community developments, the next largest based on number of employees and then, you know, administration, finance, legal, human resources and buildings and grounds. And just showing that in table. So general fund revenues, looking for next year franchise fees, we are expecting and forecast to increase about thirty-six thousand with. It's a three percent of the gross revenue, the state is proposing some increases to both gas and electricity rates that will naturally create a little bit more revenue on the franchise fee. So we're estimating about thirty-six thousand and change for that, state liquor revenues, we are forecasting to decrease by almost fifty thousand next year just due to those declining collections. We did eliminate, well, the, the state's eliminated local daycare licensing this year, so historically we had about fourteen thousand revenues from license fees. So those have been removed from the budget. We also, the city has a fiber optic network and we do lease some extra capacity on it, we had a number of leases that were terminated this year, so we're estimating about fifty-one thousand. Less in fiber lease revenues, state shared revenues, we are hopeful that we'll see an increase and AIC is, is forecasting that, so we do have an assumption of a two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase this year. On the about two point eight million that we receive in state shared revenue, so that's, that is one area we do estimate an increase. And then you'll see refunds and reimbursements on the general fund, we are now budgeting the funds coming in from the, now with all the, the paramedic firefighter positions filled. We are bringing those funds in from the volunteers that are paying for those positions for the first three years, that's around twenty-nine thousand for those three positions. And then in a couple of years, the city will start contributing and paying for a portion of those positions. And then fund transfers, they're, just, it's, it's an accounting change, we used to. You know, the, the utility operations, whether it's water, sewer, sanitation, they pay for services that the general fund provides them. We previously accounted those as a fund transfer between the funds, but the, when we went through the audit last year, they recommended we change that to a fee for service category. An internal service charge, so those are just moving line items, it's just, you'll see that one will get zeroed out and the other, it'll just be showing in a different location.
Mr. Mary, one clarifying thing, the, I want to clarify that the fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars for daycare license. We had, after a year and a half, had worked on a number of things with our daycare providers. That amount was to cover our costs for the inspections and licenses, right?
And the background checks and licensing, correct, and you'll see, you'll see a reduction in cost in the police department for all the background checks.
But the daycare will, these daycare folks will still be assuming these things because the state took it on, at least the licensing piece.
They will pay what the state's fees are now moving forward.
Right, okay, I just want to clarify, we did what we could, yeah, sorry, thanks.
Utility rates this year, so every five years we do a rate study, we were forecast rates for the next five years, so we are in the last year of our current rate study and the. The new one's just being completed, will come to council your next few months. So water will be increased four percent, sewer two point two five percent, stormwater will be increased three percent and then sanitation will have a mix. Mechanical containers, so dumpsters will go down three point two percent. The last sanitation rate adjustment found an inequity between roll carts and mechanical containers for the cost of service to that class, that customer class. So mechanical containers will go down three point two percent, residential roll carts will see no change and then some miscellaneous fees will go up about two point five percent in sanitation. For water capital fund, looking at the capital funds, water fund will transfer about two point four million to capital this year with a beginning fund balance of nine point three. And then investment earnings have been a little bit higher, so two hundred and forty-eight thousand. For expenses, we have a hundred and forty-seven thousand in building projects, one point two million in waterline improvements and then an ending fund balance of ten million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. For sewer capital fund, the transfer from sewer to sewer capital will be three point three million with a beginning fund balance of twenty-five and investment earnings of about nine hundred and fifty-two thousand. We've got a number of projects budgeted next year, including sewer main replacements, building improvements, water reclamation facility improvements, one point seven million, lift station renovations at two point seven. And then so we are forecasting an ending fund balance slightly less than the beginning at twenty-four point five million for the sewer capital fund. Storm mark capital, pretty small, it's a relatively new utility that's had a fairly low rate, so investment earnings about sixteen thousand, a transfer end of a hundred and ninety-three from the storm water fund with a beginning fund balance just under four hundred thousand. We are just still in that last year of full assessment and cleaning and the capital improvement plan will come next, they'll have any fund balance of just under six hundred thousand for storm capital. And then sanitation, interest earnings about three hundred and fifty thousand, transfer sanitation just under five hundred and fifty with eleven point nine beginning fund balance. And then we have any fund balance allocated at twelve point five million, that includes both landfill closure costs and we are. Anticipating relocating the recycling facility and the yard waste collection, so we've got three point five million budget for that and then transfer station replacement or acquisition at four point nine million per sanitation. For capital projects, this is all, everything non-enterprise or utility related, so revenues, we have three point one million budgeted in grant revenues for capital project fund. There are three tap grants that we have next year that will be bringing in funds, we have funds for both the two north and south Mountain View projects and then the pedestrian underpass underneath south, the south couplet, those are all grant funded. About two million in total grant funds for those projects and then we also are bringing in about one point one million of the remaining ARPA funds for the city shop project to finish that out in FY twenty-six. We got donations of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, those are largely coming from the urban rule agency that's supporting a number of projects that the city and the agency are partnering in the district and we have a little bit under five hundred and fifty thousand investment earnings this year. Transfers into capital projects, general fund is gonna, is transferring a million, sixty-seven thousand. And then we also have the playfields contributing fifty thousand to accumulate, so both the, the city and the district share in the operations of the Moscow School District Community Play Fields. And we are accumulating funding for future maintenance of facilities, we've got a lot of stuff, we're doing batting cages and padding and netting, so it's a, it's a constant upkeep on the facility and the street fund is transferring in about five hundred and five thousand. With a beginning fund balance of about thirteen nine, so capital projects, we've got budget for next year underneath buildings, general government, so it's largely the city shop facility. So we've got three point, almost three point five million budgeted for buildings, two point four million of that is for the new city shop construction. Nine ninety-seven is for the existing shop remodel, we have an HVAC replacement at station three at just under seventy-five thousand, HVAC at the youth center just under twenty, and then we are also budgeting to do a facility assessment for the humane, the animal shelter. At twenty thousand, streetscape program has twenty-two, five-ten for south couplet beautification design work and then the starting of the downtown streetscape as I mentioned for two fifty. And then we have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the sidewalk program to support the city's ADA transition plan where we have to replace pad ramps that are non-compliant throughout the town. Every year to make improvements towards that goal. For roadway improvements, just over three million budgeted, South Main pedestrian underpass is a million seventy-three, we have the, the two. Mountain View projects at eight twenty-five each or eight hundred and twenty-five thousand for the north and eight hundred and nine for the south and then our surface treatment program at three hundred and fifty. And then public arts, there's a hundred and sixty-five thousand budgeted, that includes city shop and east city park project at a hundred and fifty combined between those two and additional fifteen thousand contribution to the one percent program. For park improvements, we're budgeting nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, East City Park Stage is the largest piece of that, so eight hundred and eighty-five thousand for that project. And then we'll be starting off now that the latest rolling hills addition has gotten access to the Moser Park property, we'll be starting on the master planning for that park future development. And then we'll end the year, we're forecasting with a fund balance of eleven point seven billion, so. So that's kind of the overview of the highlights of the budget, with that, status recommendation is conduct a public hearing. And after consideration and testimony received, you have three actions this evening, the first is to approve the foregone tax recovery resolution, so in order to. Add foregone revenues to the city's tax, you have to, to property tax levy, you have to pass a resolution. Then we have the appropriation ordinance, so we would recommend approval of the ordinance under suspension of rules requiring three complete separate readings. And then the last item is just authorizing the mayor's execution of the L two, which is the official form for. is the official form for signifying what the city's tax levy will be for the upcoming year. Okay, that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council has.
Before we move on, we did get one inquiry as to why the budget itself wasn't included in the agenda. It's big, this is the budget, and it would have been too big to put in with the agenda itself, it's included with the staff report, is a URL and can be accessed there, and since the action tonight is on the appropriations ordinance, the appropriations ordinance itself is included in the agenda here tonight. So with that onward to questions, well, questions from council, yeah?
Just, thanks for putting all this together, I know it's not, it's some people's first time of looking at the budget, and most of us have looked at it multiple times over the last couple of months, so. Anyway, I know it was a lot of work this year, as it is every year, and appreciate that, thank you.
Your honor, if I might, I forgot to mention, there was one other change since the workshop, where we got an updated budget from WICOM. And so initially, that came in as a twelve percent increase, which would be about a ninety thousand dollar increase for dispatch services, they revised that down to a six percent increase, so roughly the forty thousand of new tax revenue from new construction is just going to offset another forty thousand in expense for the dispatch services to the city. So I, I forgot to mention that dispatch number did change since we had the budget workshop, so, but they turned out to be, between the new construction and annexation value and the increase in dispatch cost, it ended up being a wash.
So yeah, so I will say that back on July eighth, we had the budget workshop, we plotted through this, pretty much department by department, line by line, so council had a good solid look at everything that's in there, which might explain partly the dearth of questions at the moment. So at this point, let's move on to public comment. More questions?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Please.
And if, I'm okay if Bill, gonna answer in there, you had mentioned the feedback from Leita County about potential, the potential undervaluing of the multifamily homes of fifty percent. Is that something that we would expect to see play out the next valuation cycle? I'm trying to understand.
So it, it won't change.
Anything for us.
Anything we receive, we levy a dollar amount, so if they change value of a certain property class, we don't get a dollar more, it just redistributes who pays it. So those examples, like I had when the single family homes went up forty percent and the commercial properties went up two percent, and so it just shifted the burden if the multifamily increases twenty five, because I think they're saying they're going to increase twenty five percent this year, and then kind of monitor the market after that. And so it'll just shift who pays, but it doesn't, does, we don't get a dollar more, we only get the dollar amount that we levy, and it just shifts who pays.
So I'm going to be a little bit snarky and say, the people who are going to be angry with us about their property tax bill may change from being single family property owners to maybe hearing some more vocal feedback from multifamily housing.
Okay, but you know, I think they also
That's the county.
Realize that they
Exactly.
Their taxes have been going down for the last couple of years, too, so.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
The shift happens frequently.
Yeah, shift happens. The pendulum swings, yeah.
Yeah.
Fair, that's all I had, mayor.
I, I had three questions. You mentioned landfill closure, what's our date on that? And you give me a year, you don't have to give me like to the day, because I don't expect that, but, okay.
So we're looking Yeah, so that's a thirty year liability for that facility.
Thirty years from when?
Today.
Okay.
From when the closure plan was done last year, so essentially it was looking at a long-term horizon of what our liability is for closure expenses related to the inert demolition sites sells out of the transfer station.
So twenty fifty five is what you're saying?
To recall, was it?
Twenty five was last year, thirty years plus is twenty.
Tyler, do you recall? Yeah, but it's essentially, it's our long-term liability for our closure expenses.
Yeah, I, I just remember talking about it like way back, and it's, it's always been this closure thing, and I thought, all right, what's, what, what are we looking at? Thirty year horizon is.
And they have additional capacity, that's just what we're forecasting over the next thirty years, we don't expect to run out of capacity, and again, this is only inert demolition, all municipal solid waste is shipped currently to Boardman Oregon, and so it operates as a transfer, so this is just for construction, demolition, other materials that are currently remained landfilled out of the transfer station.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may, recycling center relocation, what's our thought process on when that should happen?
In the next five years.
Five years. Okay, last question, and you may, I, I, I can be talked to tomorrow if this is not something you know off the cuff right now, the miscellaneous fees in the sanitation that went up two and a half percent, what was that?
They were, Tyler, do you recall? Like tire disposal, I mean, it's just, it's small scale stuff, nothing that's, that a customer's going to pay on their utility bill in the city, it's going to be things that, like services out of the transfer station, whether it's tipping fees or tire disposal, so just miscellaneous.
Tire disposal. Okay, thank you, that, that makes me happy. Well, not really, but the answer makes me happy. Okay.
Anybody else at this time, you can have another lick at it later on if stuff arises. Okay, public testimony in favor of the actions proposed tonight.
Victoria Seaver, one twenty one North Lily, Moscow, and I was at the budget workshop. So in support of the proposed budget, my primary observations during the city's budget workshop mid-July include, not completely, but include these points. One, many areas of the budget have pared back projects and/or identified ways for employee contributions to accomplish more, and I say contributions because we have good employees who do more than minimum, they contribute their very best foot forward, so I wanted a better word. Two areas were shown in the budget workshop where staff training pays off, yay, saves us money, and illustrated, illustrated, personal dedication to a job where well done, got to see it. Number three, increases in wages and, sorry, it's gonna, it's gonna make a bell. Increases in wages and benefits, express appreciation for the value of our employees, even though not as fully as a revenue-rich budget could if it were allowed. While there were many cuts to the budget, I was surprised, there were many cuts to the budget, necessary new or bigger projects cause increases, and to everything, there are inflation factors. Five, departments and administration have responsibly prioritized what has been submitted to them and the available resources to manage, table, or cut city operations for the next fiscal year. Six, I saw nothing untoward, I have to say this every year, numbers in columns to compare expenses from last year to numbers for the next year, like we see in the paper, I'm glad to see them, but they don't tell you anything, whereas the budget workshop validates those figures. Want to know what those numbers come from, you come to the workshop. Seven, while anybody might disagree on elements or tweak some items, on the whole, the budget is a sound budget. And number eight, it takes hard, it takes hard study and careful insight by all levels to affect a budget process, which is especially challenging in an economic funding uncertainty, a lot of uncertainty. So thanks to everyone at all levels for the hard work they've done.
Thanks, Victoria.
Thanks for coming to the workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, further public testimony in favor. Hearing done, moving on, public testimony in opposition. And public testimony of a general nature. Okay, at this time, the public hearing is closed, and council, your honor, commence.
If I might answer council member Trucchio's questions on sanitation, I just pulled up the fee resolution, I can, for the two per, two and a half percent increases, so it's, it's really the tipping fees out of the transfer station, so, you know, municipal solid waste tipping, so if somebody self hauls municipal waste out there, it's going for one oh, one oh two seventy seven per ton to one oh five forty three per ton, inert demolition tipping, forty one eleven per ton to forty one seventy three per ton, forty one dollars and seventy three cents. Mixed materials tipping fee, seventy one ten per ton, it's going to seventy two seventeen per ton, so it's most of the tipping fees. Tire disposal is a big one, it's, it is going up significantly from two hundred and thirty six dollars per ton of tires to three hundred and twenty five per ton, that's where we saw some large increases. The only other things that are increasing, you know, any loose yardage on the ground, so if, if somebody dumps garbage around their dumpster and spills over, that charge for cleaning it is going up from, to, from thirty four fifty eight per cubic yard to thirty five forty four, extra service for a dumpster beyond what they're scheduled for is going up at three percent, extra service, yeah, really, and then roll cart exchanges, if you change after the initial sixty days, roll cart replacements are going up two dollars, yeah, it's just
Just little stuff.
It's mostly tipping fees and
Yeah.
Few other miscellaneous items.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, back to council deliberation in search of a conclusion on three different conclusions.
What? Well, because we have, we have three
Yeah.
Actions we will need to take.
Thank you, yes.
Better dominoes?
Please. I, and again, kind of echoing some sentiments that were brought up during the budget workshop, and again, tonight, and I appreciate Victoria getting up as well, you know, a constant refrain that we hear going through this process is that us as a city, we do a lot with a little, right, and even kind of like working through Bill's presentation tonight, knowing that we have about a hundred and sixty five employees, is that?
Correct.
Yeah, about a hundred and sixty five employees to deliver all the services to make Moscow the town that we all love living in is no small feat, and so, and especially considering with how much land is in this town that is, again, tax exempt, you know, it is, it is, it is, it is a pretty impressive undertaking to do so much with so little, so even though these numbers are, are astounding and big, I appreciate the hard work that the staff goes through throughout the year to put this together and, and to present us with a balanced budget, so I just wanted to express gratitude and echo the fact that, that it's a, it's an impressive, an impressive, yeah, it's impressive what we can do, and grateful, grateful for our staff that, that does it.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of ditto what most everybody said here tonight, this is my tenth, my tenth budget, and I remember being really excited schlepping that thing around, well, there were two of them in the beginning, and they were big monster binders, and I was so excited, and, and it is never, ever a comfortable or easy process, and it is very deliberate and very careful, from the minute in March when they start, you know, they start groaning about it, the employees start, oh no, but by the end, it's a, it's a beautiful thing, and, and I, I will tell you that in the last couple of years, part of the fun of it is Victoria's overview of it, and whether or not in the end you walk away smiling, it makes me happy. There are times when I, I've seen you not quite as, as perky. I want to have these moments, though, I want us to recognize the emergency communication project is done, you guys, it's so good, we no longer have law enforcement or emergency personnel in a position where they're trying to save somebody and they can't talk to anyone to call for help or call for backup, it just, that just kept me up at night. The city shop, yay, the downtown, little chunks of the downtown at a time improvement, yay, yay, school district partnership, yay, and I want to, I want to have lots of exclamation points there, I wish that was the same with all of our partners, I think that we have a real happy, bright future with that one, and I want the rest of our partners to be there as well. Streets, I feel like Walter Steed, one who has gone before us, I wish we could somehow find that money tree and just get that project done for now, because it's never, it's one of those that goes on until Tyler's grandkids are, are working in the streets department. But I, I, I too have great gratitude, I have great awe, honestly, that, that, that you accomplished this, and now it's not two binders anymore, which is nice, but then also that we're willing to go to the, the dollar thirty two for tipping fee discussion in a public way, so that everybody understands this is our money and not just the council's or the city's money, it's everybody's, and so I, I really, really appreciate that.
True. Yeah, like, like both other council members said, there's a lot of work that goes into this, and through this process, we often get emails, mostly questioning, which is great, I think people should be able to question, it's an important part of what makes our country good to live in. But with that being said, there's, with that questioning and that process comes, although people might not agree with everything, or how we're spending money, my, my question is, well, where else would it go, and, and so we, my point is, we, people that have emailed were grateful for perspective, and we hope that more of those perspectives come out now and in the future, and and, and my biggest plea is, if, if those were big issues, we had a public hearing that no one was in opposition towards, and so it's easy to fire off an email, it's, it's harder to dedicate your time to come here, so if you are not opposed, we hope to see you next year. And thank you to staff for putting so much hard work in, and look forward to hearing more opposition this up next coming.
Thanks, Drew.
Sandra, Julia, Haley?
I'll be happy to say something. And, and obviously, we could completely say the exact same things that have gone on, and I so appreciate the council folks that have put a lot of time in to listen and to work together and ask questions, but I haven't been on it for ten years, like Gina, but I've been through a few budget meetings and workshops, and what I, what I appreciate, I think the most is the fact that even by the time we get to the workshop, that's not the first time we have gone through this budget, right, and I remember, I think I was telling Bryce last year, probably Bryce last year, I said, don't panic about it, because by the time you get to the workshop, you'll have heard most of this already, and you build on that, and it's, it's really, as a council person who, I mean, we all have different jobs, and we do different things along with this, I'm really thankful that we have the opportunity to have looked at this multiple times, and have asked minutia questions like months ago, right, which is great, which might be why, if you're looking at a state going, they're really not saying a whole lot, what's going on, well, we have, we've asked a lot of questions over the months in different ways, and maybe different meetings, whether they were council meetings or whether they were workshop meetings, so I, I would, I would feel, I'd feel bad if folks went like, wow, they didn't put time into this, because we've all put time and, and have worked really hard, and we do worry about this, I look down, down the road, we've all worried about this, we all worry about the streets, and we all worry about the sewers, and we worry about the playfields, and we worry about the folks that just moved here and that they're going to be happy living in Moscow, and what can we do to make it easy for them, when they're not paying too much but getting what they need, and year in and year out, our staff puts that together and they do that, and thank you for that. And it's not just the folks in this room, it's the folks in this room and the people that work for the folks that are in this room today, and I hope the word gets out to them, because that's no small task, and if you have questions, please come, glad you asked, like Drew said, the email's great, questions on the street are great, I get questions on the street all the time, I appreciate that. It's a great process, and I wouldn't, wouldn't say it's a fun process exactly, but it's not not fun, right, it's really interesting, and I never thought I'd say that about a budget workshop before, I came in the first time ever going, oh my gosh, I hope I gotta be awake, and I was like, oh, I've heard this, I know what's going on, so relieved, so participate, if you want to know more, participate, you're always welcome to ask us questions, and, but most importantly, to those folks that aren't here today, that I hope they're enjoying time with their families, that come back in at eight o'clock tomorrow, thanks to them for all they've done, also, I think Moscow has an amazing team, and I'm grateful to be a very small part of it.
Julia, Haley?
I don't really have any more questions, and so I can, are you, do you have questions?
I, I asked a lot of questions at the workshop, so I'll be respectful of everyone.
I've got one thing, I'm sorry.
Not to subject them to the
And Bill, if you want to chime in here as well, I do want to just highlight that was not presented in your presentation, how as a city, we did reassess the commission budgets within the city. And I think that that's important to maybe relay here tonight of how we, you know, we went through all the commissions. We looked at what they asked for, right, for their budget, kind of looked at what they've been spending over the last couple of years. And so a lot of those budgets were actually reduced going into this next fiscal year. And I think that's important to, to know that, like, us as a city, looking at how we're, again, allocating that, so.
Yeah, it's, we went through a, so early in the budget process, we were very concerned of our ability to try to hit our capital investment need. And so not only commission budgets, but I think I carved two hundred thousand out of department budgets for, you know, things that, that I know, you know, oftentimes with personnel for training, everybody would, you know, hopes they build to, to attend a certain number of trainings, but it rarely does the calendar ever work out. And so we had to squeeze and we squeezed across all the departments. And the commission budgets were ones we looked at because historically, you know, the requests received from the commissions was nearly double what they typically spend every year. And again, I think it's the best intentions. We're going to get this project done and this project done, but it just moves slower than they, they expected. So we did end up reducing the convention, the commission budgets by about half of, of what was total requested. But it was, it was across not only all the commissions, but it was across all the departments this year. Because we do take it very seriously that maintaining our critical assets in our infrastructure is almost equally as important as our daily operations. And if we fall behind in, in maintaining those things that we are trusted to care for, well, the city will end up in a bad place. And so we work very hard to make sure that we are doing our capital improvement plan every year and making sure that we try to hit those capital transfers so that we can repair the roads when they need it and we do the best that we can. So yeah, I appreciate highlighting the commission budgets. It was across all departments as well.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Oh, you got another question?
I was just going to say, I want to clarify, like, we all had our critical questions. We had some hard hitting questions at the workshop, so it's not all love and roses. And so I want to clarify, we did our due diligence, I promise. We're happy with where we ended up. So Julia, go for it.
All right, I move that we approve the foregone tax recovery resolution.
Resolution.
Second.
Moving seconded. Okay, Julia?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And Drew?
Aye.
Okay, that resolution goes through.
I move that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Move and seconded. Okay, Bryce?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And Julia?
Aye.
Okay, so that's ordinance number twenty twenty five dash oh eight.
Finally, oh, you have to read it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just as you suggested.
As I said, read it by title.
Okay, here we go. In ordinance entitled annual appropriation ordinance appropriating one hundred thirty nine million five hundred seventy eight thousand four hundred forty two dollars for the purposes of defraying all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Moscow, Leita County, state of Idaho, for the twenty twenty six fiscal year, beginning the first day of October twenty twenty five and ending the thirtieth day of September twenty twenty six, and allotting resources by fund for said appropriation for the objects and purposes set forth in this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law. Okay.
Okay, finally, I move that we authorize the mayor's execution of the L two property tax certification in the aggregate amount of nine million eighty eight thousand five hundred and two dollars.
Second.
Who wants it?
Drew can have it.
Okay, Gina?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And Haley?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. On down to number five, another public hearing. This is for the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty six fee resolution with Bill Belknap. The rules for this public hearing are exactly the same as the previous. Public hearing opens, staff presents, council questions, public testimony in favor, public testimony in opposition, public testimony of a general nature, public hearing closes and council deliberates. So at this time, public hearing is open.
Thank you, Your Honor. So any new fees or any increase of fees by more than five percent requires a public hearing in accordance with Idaho code. There are a lot of fees here that are going to be substantially less than five percent, but we do have a couple of new ones. And so we just, we do a hearing to capture all of those. The city's fees must be reasonably related to the actual cost of the service provided. And so we do track that every year as well. And so many of these fee increases are just due to additional costs associated with the delivery of service. I mean, as you mentioned, our, you know, our cost of living for employees is going up four percent. So the cost of the delivery of the service in many instances is going to go up by at least four percent, if not a little bit more. And so we do have that just general inflationary cost. We also had, one of the, one of the new fees this year is related to legislation passed this last session, which was House Bill two fifty three that addresses public records requests. And it created a new standard for both the time for provision of public records as well as the, the cost for public records for out of state request. So a lot of communities get hit by large purchasing companies that want everything you bought for the last year. They create these very large requests. And, and we generally, you're required, previously, you're required to provide two hours labor free, hundred pages free. And so, you know, that put, puts a substantial burden on many city, cities, staff and counties, other public agencies across state of Idaho. House Bill two fifty three created a different standard. And not only did you have to give two hours free, have to write hundred, hundred pages at no cost, and then you could only charge, if you had any labor beyond that, you could only charge at the hourly rate of the lowest qualified person or the lowest paid person qualified to provide that service. And so anyhow, you, it just, it ends up being a fairly costly venture. So House Bill two fifty three created a different standard for out of state public records request. Both extended the time. So initially, we have to respond within three days and have up to ten days to provide a record to an in-state recipient. Now you have twenty one days to respond to an out of state and up to thirty five days to provide to an out of state. You can charge the full cost of whatever it takes to provide those records. You, the two hours is not free, the hundred pages is not free. You can charge that full cost. And it can be charged at the rate of the people providing that service. And so it allows cities to really more fully recapture their costs in providing public records for those that aren't residents of their community or really the state's the definition. And it's, it's a little bit of an interesting one because it's either you're a resident state of Idaho or you're employed by a resident state of Idaho. And so if you meet either of those two criteria, you are underneath the old standards. It's the three days and ten days. It's the two hours free, it's a hundred pages free. It's, it's billed of the lowest qualified individual. But if you're not either of those and you're out of state, then we are allowed to charge the true cost of providing that service.
Do we have some sort of attestation?
That's what I was
We do.
Okay. Will you share that with the university, please? Because
Just because they cert, just because they certify it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's, yeah, yeah. That's a big deal. It's a very big deal.
It is. And we had, we had one that was using the PO of Boise, I think, in trying to act like they're a resident and they were not, so. Anyhow, so there's a new fee related to out of state this year because of House Bill two fifty three. So I just, that's a long winded explanation of why that one is there. So just going to walk through the majority of the, the fees are proposed to be increased. So for the arts department, you'll see a large deletion in art walk fees because that's being transitioned over to the chamber underneath our services agreement. So you'll see those being removed from the fee resolution. And then other arts program fees are, have been generally increased by about three percent. Again, just trying to keep up with that annual inflation. For community development, some building valuation measures are increasing between one and two percent. So when I say non ICC, so generally, we adopt the International Code Council's Building Valuation Table for the purposes of determining the value of a project and permits are related and based upon the value of that project. Many construction permits are. There are certain things that ICC does not publish a value for. Porches, covered porches, unfinished basements, things like that. So in the fee resolution, there is a table for some of those things that are not included in the ICC valuation table. And so those have been increased by a, a small percentage this year. Other miscellaneous fees in community development have been increased anywhere between two and three percent across, across the board. For community events, again, miscellaneous event program fees have been increased by three percent. For public records, as I mentioned, I don't need to explain that, non-residents, this is a new fee. So it's the actual cost to provide the records. And then the, that bill also allowed the city to adopt a uniform standard charge for the provision of duplicate records. So these are like computer based. They've already been reviewed and so you can charge this uniform to, to deliver. So the person who makes the first request is going to pay the full cost of what it takes to prepare. Once you've got a duplicate set and it's just copying what's already been provided, you can adopt a uniform cost. So we calculated what our time would be to, to process that. So up to twenty gigabytes of data, it's going to be thirty dollars and then five dollars for each additional twenty gigabytes in the single request. So that's again, another House Bill two fifty three feature. Five releases are increased by three percent. I would note, because we go four digits deep on that, it was rounded just to eight cents. So going from seven cents a foot to eight cents was more than three percent. It was just rounding. It's actually going to be point zero seven two one. So that's, that'll be a correction will be made in the final resolution, not eight cents. So Division Tree Deposit increased three percent. Egan Youth Programming Fees were increased between two to three percent. Herc Rental Fees were increased three percent. Hamilton Low Aquatic Center Fees were increased by three percent. For Recreation Program Fees were proposed to be increased by three percent. Sky hot camps have been taken out because they're going to accept payment directly. So we're going to be coming to the council with a contract for services. They'll actually be directly receiving those. So we don't need those in our fee resolution any longer moving forward. Parks Rentals increased by three percent. There's a new fee in the animal fee category for euthanization order appeals. So if there's a determination of a vicious animal, there's been a bite, the police chief has ordered the animal's destruction. The owner hat, does have the ability to appeal that. It is kind of a lengthy process, involves a city attorney, involves me, involves a fair number of staff to do that. So we are proposing a new fee of a hundred dollars for that appeal process to just help cover our administrative cost to go through that process. So that is a new fee this year. For sewer fees, like, as we talked already, sewer service rates going up two and a quarter percent. The disconnection fee decreased significantly because we're going to make the customer responsible for the excavation and backfill. Sewer tap fee increased by about fourteen percent to cover actual cost on the water side. Water service rates, as we talked about, are going up four percent. We are increasing some of our repeated construction flushing. So when you're building a new water main, you have to flush it and then test it for bacteria. We've had a number of projects where we've been coming back multiple, multiple times trying to get that water main to pass. So we've increased that to cover our actual costs because we've been spending, we've been dedicating a lot of resources to this recently. And we want to make sure that we're covering our true cost. So that is being increased by fifteen percent. GFC, GFC is a general facility charges. These are your hookup and connection fees to the water system are increasing two to three percent in accordance with the rate study. On water meters, actually, the fees are going down on the water meters. As you recall, we just launched the advanced water metering program. The company that we selected, their meters are actually lower cost than the meters we previously sourced. And so because we have to charge only the cost of delivery service, the, the meter costs are going down for the purchase of new meters. Also, turn off and, turn off and on outside business hours is gone up and water disconnection fees were increased to cover actual cost of those services. For stormwater, as I mentioned, service fees are proposed to be increased by three percent. That's the only change there. Street fees, the parade fees were not changing, but we just modified the description to make it a little bit more clear. It was time and materials was the description. And so it's now going to be, you know, staff labor plus the, the traffic control device rental fee in the table. So it's a little bit more clear for them to understand. And then the description of the parade, we also are clarifying. So it's not a fee change, but we're just updating the, the description to avoid confusion there. And then updated description for the traffic control device rental. And then the fees were increased by five percent for those. On sanitation, as I mentioned, mechanical containers are being reduced by three point two percent. Roll carts will see no change. And those miscellaneous fees are being increased by two and a half percent, the ones we just talked about. The other one, the big one is tire disposal per ton is going up thirty seven percent because we're just seeing substantial cost for tire recycling disposal. So that's, those are really the bulk of all the changes. So since recommendations conduct the public hearing and after considering testimony presented, approve the FY twenty six fee resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, two, three. For the schedule, what letter become, comes before?
If you got a page number, that'd be great.
I got you. It is page number. I lost it. I, forty seven.
Forty seven, good.
And just at the very, I can't tell if it's a formatting error. So this is in relation to special event staffing. So it's grouped with all the parade and, and rental stuff. It says holiday rate per employee struck out with a hundred dollars per hour. That's, that is a, is it being removed because it's addressed by the actual cost of labor blurb above it?
Correct. It's being removed because we already pay the employees hourly, the holiday rate.
Right.
Depending whether they're working or not, they already paid the eight hours compensation. So it's not an additional cost. It's really just the overtime cost.
Okay.
And so we remove that.
Okay. And then I'm curious, page seventeen eighteen, why condensed the grading plan review fees and grading permit fees? It like went from like fifty to, it's like we condensed one of them.
Excuse me, what page was that?
Six, seven, sorry, seventeen and eighteen.
Seventeen eighteen.
It's like we, we condensed and instead of having like a Goldilocks middle one, we've got, we, we adjusted the numbers. I'm scrolling, I'm scrolling, I'm scrolling.
Yeah, so it, so it was broke, it was previously broken up by cubic yards, you know, fifty or less, fifty to a hundred, hundred one to a thousand or one thousand one to a hundred thousand. So it just eliminated the one thousand to ten thousand. Because that's usually, once you break
Once you're hitting fifty one, you're talking a big project anyways.
Larger project, yeah, correct. Yeah, they did, they didn't feel they needed that banned. Most, most small scale stuff's going to be under the thousand yards. Most large projects are going to be up in that upper category. And so
That helps.
Yeah, they didn't feel there was necessary to maintain that. And, and again, it's, it's only adding, yeah, the thirty per ten thousand cubic yards.
Okay. And then my last question, why eliminate the RV park review fees on page nineteen? Is that, I didn't remember if that was like a county jurisdiction thing or if it's just, if specifying RV fell outside of the scope of what we'd already
I think that was duplicate. So if you look up on the page, mobile home and recreational vehicle park fees were already up there.
Ruby.
So I think this was just kind of a historical duplication, so they removed it.
We're combining, I'm probably, okay.
Yep.
Ruby, that works great. Those are my three. Thank you.
Julia?
I have a question about some of the recreation fees. I, I'm sorry, this is maybe too, too in the weeds. But I remember we talked about the scholarships for the Herc and the pool and different recreation fees for kids. Do you, did we ever figure out if those are actually all used or do we have some left?
I have a report, I'd be happy to send you. We've not been using all that we have been allocating in the last few years.
So they are, they, there are still, you know, in most, most of the time, there are still scholarships available.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm happy to send the report. I, I got that from Cody a couple of months ago.
Sorry if we've already seen it.
No, you've not.
Oh, okay.
I saw it, I saw it in preparation for the budget.
Thanks. Great.
Right. Just something really quick, Bill, on page eight, just for all of my, and all of our avid restaurant and bar owners and on premise, off premise alcohol licensing with beer, liquor and wine. I would just like to state and, and be backed up that the fees are not increasing this upcoming year.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I'd like to note they had an increase for how many years before this?
About fifteen.
Yeah, so we're time for a change.
I'll make a motion.
Your Honor, we need to hold the, hold the hearing.
I'm so ready, though.
You may be moved differently after
I can move, I can move later.
Okay, public testimony in favor. Public testimony in opposition. Public testimony of a general nature. Okay, hearing done. Public hearing is closed. Now we can move on to council deliberation slash action.
I'm just waiting for everybody to deliberate. All right.
I don't have any more questions.
No more? Bryce, no? Haley?
I'm, I'm set.
There you go. There you go.
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
Guess what?
Good.
I move that we approve the FY twenty twenty-six fee resolution as proposed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, Haley.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
And Julia.
Aye.
All right. Okay, that one goes. Number six, the alley west of Main Street Sewer Change Order Number One, Bob Bevell.
I'm just glad it's not about budget.
Oh, yes, it is.
I'd rather have it be about sewers. It is tangentially. Yes, you're right. You're right.
I do kind of feel the same way, though, Julia.
Let's talk about sewers.
I'm done with them.
We'll get into some budget talk.
Good evening. I'm here to, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the alley west of Main Street Sewer Change Order Number One. For those who are not familiar with the project, we are currently in construction of the sewer line of the, in the alley west of Main Street. So this would be the this would be this sewer line here runs down the alley from Friendship Square, essentially down to Sixth Street. It's very busy, very busy alley, very prominent part of town. I'm pretty sure everybody's familiar with this project by now. What's kind of difficult to see in this, in this picture is running parallel to the sewer line, there is a storm line in that alley as well. And that storm line is is a pretty old corrugated metal pipe sewer line. And as we've gotten into this project, we've run into some issues with the sewer line. Part of the project is we needed to remove and replace some catch basins that were directly over top of the sewer line. Those, we had no choice. We had to remove and replace those with the sewer project. And we were hopeful that we were going to be able to to do those removals and replacement with the existing, with the existing line. But the existing line is is in pretty bad shape. In this photo here, you can, you can see the holes in the side of the pipe right at the spring line of the of the pipe. And generally, when you do these kind of connections, there's a there's a saddle and a band that would go around the pipe and the and that that saddle and band would cinch down on the pipe to create a good connection between your connecting pipe and the and the main. However, we can't utilize those those fixtures with the the pipe and the condition that it's at.
Can I ask, does that mean that it was leaking that whole time? Or did we do a little scrapey scrape and scabbed?
So it's important to mention to say that this is, this is stormwater.
Stormwater, okay.
It is, it's storm sewer, so it is not sanitary sewer.
Right, thank you.
So.
Still not ideal, but?
Not ideal, but it's it it's it's not leaking nasty stuff into the into the ground. It's, it's street runoff.
Okay.
Is that, just curiosity, that's like eighteen inch, two inch, or?
Oh, the size of it?
Yeah, two.
It's a twelve inch.
Twelve inch?
Yep.
And then the galvanized, what's?
It's a, it's a twelve, it's a twelve inch corrugated metal pipe. It is galvanized. But the galvanizing does does deteriorate over time, especially with our our soil chemistry is actually very very hard on on galvanized pipe. So some of the important things to remember when when we're considering this this change order is this change order doesn't, isn't going to affect the performance period of the project. We are still very intent on meeting that September twenty-sixth deadline for the project. That's very important because we need to get that done prior to the homecoming parade and switching the the farmer's market over to the alley. And this work, just like the other work, will, it'll necessitate a phase closure of the of the parking lot. Ideally, we wanted to have this done at the exact same time. But it just, it's, it's not going to work. We we ended up having to come back for, come to council for the change order. And the contractor hasn't stopped working through this process. So they've made significant process. They're actually going to have to come back and basically redo the whole process again with the with the storm sewer once they're done with the sanitary. And again, steel plates will be covering any open holes at night. And another important thing to to mention is that the need for the replacement of the storm line is a direct result of the the sanitary project. So when we initially did the design of the project, we looked at the condition of this pipe. And we, it was noted that the condition of the pipe was was not good. But at that time, we didn't have any funding mechanism really to replace the pipe. Historically, stormlines are replaced through the Streets Fund, which is which at that time had taken, had taken a hit, the whole general fund had. And then, and we're transitioning into having a storm utility, which has not accumulated any funds for capital projects yet. So we were hopeful we could do the sewer project without an impact on that on that storm line. As we've gotten into construction, it's become apparent that we aren't going to be able to do that. So part of the important thing to mention is is that is that the the actual need for the replacement of this of this storm line is a direct result of the of the storm or the the sanitary project. So the city, city council approved the, sorry. I'm, I'm fighting.
The tickle.
I have a tickle in my throat. I'm fighting pneumonia. Or I'm at the tail end of it, so I'm doing better, but bear with me. I'm I'm fighting a cough.
Okay. Here, Bob.
I thought you were getting choked up about sewers. I thought you were feeling bad that we had to replace that sewer.
No, I'm, I'm, no. So the city council previously awarded the contract on April seventh of twenty twenty-five. The original contract amount was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This change order is approximately forty-three thousand dollars, and it's it's going to be an increase to the contract of about eleven point six five. I have, I have one in my.
Oh, no.
Thank you, though. I appreciate it. So this change order would be an increase to the to the contract of eleven point six five percent, which is just slightly above the ten percent that we normally allow without without coming back to council. With this new contract amount, we're with this change order, the new contract amount would be four hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. The additional cost of the of the change order will be, will be expended from the sanitary funds as as justified by the the project. The sanitary project is causing the the problem with the with the pipe. And so the sanitary fund will pay to mitigate the impact to that line. So staff's recommendation is to approve the change order number one with devout excavation. Increase contract amount by forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and nineteen cents to four hundred and nine thousand, six six hundred and seventy-nine and fifty-one cents. And authorize staff approval of construction change orders in the amount not to exceed ten percent of the adjusted contract amount.
Yeah, so that's this extra forty-three roughly will take care of that ugly mess that we saw in the pictures.
That will, yes, so that that will be the replacement of the storm line from essentially, there's a catch basin right here. And it'll replace it all the way down to a catch basin right there.
All right. Thank you.
Bob, does the contract know the lead time on that?
We, the contractor did not, oh, lead time for, lead time. I did ask contractor about lead time. The materials are all readily available. And and they can, they can get those here pretty quickly once, once we get the change order authorized. It's, they aren't asking for any additional time. We'd kind of fight them on that anyways, so.
Okay, I just wanted to, lead times, you know, they're, they're all over the place right now.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a a twelve inch ADS pipe. It's which is a fairly new pipe, but it's pretty readily available, especially in that size. So usually in stock. It's I I can see you're kind of looking, trying to visualize.
No, I'm, I'm thinking, so I just, you just brought up a question I wasn't thinking about. So so sorry. What what do, what do they expect? And it's okay if we don't have an answer, you can email me later. But what's life expectancy on those those guys?
Well, this, this has kind of come up before on on PVC pipe. And we don't really, the jury's still out on on PVC pipe because the only thing that really degrades PVC pipe, and I don't think that, I don't know if this is necessarily PVC, but it is a, it is a plastic polymer pipe. And the only thing that really degrades the plastic polymer pipes is is UV light. And because it's buried, it's, it's they advertise it fifty to a hundred years. But we're getting, you know, in some places where they've started using that, they they have been getting more than that out of out of some of the plastic pipe.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna say, let the record show that homecoming, U of I homecoming is scheduled for October eleventh. And so Amanda and the community development team, if we're still forecasting September twenty-seventh for the target closure date.
September twenty-sixth, yeah.
There's, I I don't want it to move, but worst case scenario, Amanda and her team in the market can still if things get nudged a wee bit.
Our, our plant, we're still, we're still on schedule to be able to meet that that deadline.
Don't give them any wiggle room.
But, yeah, there, there are probably some things we could do to maybe, you know, facilitate it if that did come up. But we, we are still on schedule to meet that deadline.
And I have appreciated the city's flexibility in partnering with the U R A to make the sixth and Jackson lot available for public parking in the, while the Jackson shuffle's been happening, this Jackson lot. So for my fellow vandals at home, it's gonna be okay. I, I feel, I'm, I'm moved. I'm moved unless there's other things, Mr. Mayor.
Go for it.
I'm, I'm so emotional that I would like to move, we recommend approval, so how I need to say that, of change order number one with devout excavation to increase the contract amount by, I forgot there were numbers in this. Forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six hundred, no, yeah, nope, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six and nineteen cents, yikes, to four hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-one cents, and authorize staff approval of construction change orders in an amount not to exceed ten percent of the adjusted contract amount.
Second.
Stere.
Good choice.
That was awesome.
Okay.
Shut up, Drew.
Yeah. Okay. Sandra.
Hi.
Julia.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Okay.
Good job, Bob.
You made a bomb.
Hope you feel better.
Better, buddy, sorry.
Okay, next up is street banner policy update with Tyler Palmer. Mr. T?
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. Happy to be here today to discuss some updates that are proposed for our street banner program. Like many programs that we have in the city, our street banner program kind of started organically. You know, at some point, there were some conversations decades and decades ago about, hey, there's some banners we saw somewhere else. It'd be kind of cool to put them on some poles in Moscow. And, you know, it just evolved over time. And as with any of those programs, there's often a process of formalization. As we go through that, the last real significant formalization that happened within our banner program was in twenty thirteen when the council adopted was the current council, what is the current banner program for the city. And what we've got before you this evening is an update. So since twenty thirteen, twelve years ago, there have been some updates both in location, in utilization, and also some case law that has been presented that make it important that the city clarify what the provisions of the program are, what the parameters of the program are, and what the intent of the program is. And so that's what we're bringing before the council today. So as you can see in this map, and I know that this is a little hard to read, but really, it's not the specifics. It's kind of the general idea that we're going after here is that the city maintains different locations with different intents. We have the fixed banner location. We have an over street banner location. So we have some city fixed banner locations, which are the ones that you see that always have the city logo or the historic downtown logo on them. And then we have the U of Y. We have some designated University of Idaho locations that permanently display University of Idaho banners. And then we have some event banner locations. And those are, those are things that have historically flexed in and out with different, both city university events and to this point, some events that were put on by nonprofits. For example, Ronnie Boo in the Park, the Chamber of Music Festival has also utilized this space. So with the, just run through some of the primary changes that are taking place with this proposed policy that we have before you this evening. One of the things that this does is that it specifies and clarifies that this is not intended to be a public forum. The banner space is restricted for governmental use and governmental speech. That is something that has become important, that we designate what the intended use of this space is. It also allows for the city to enter into formal banner use agreements with other governmental entities. And so that would include like the University of Idaho. We've formalized a lot of those relationships with the university, both for street maintenance, for parking. And this is one where we have, we have had increasing formalization of their utilization of the space. And so formalizing that in an agreement seems like that's probably a good idea. And then we have city designated event banner locations that are on the lightbulb pole banners. And then also, there's some new processes that are proposed in this just to promote clarity, consistency, and also legal compliance. So just laying out some of the key differences in the policy, and the full policy is in the council's packet, but just some of the key differences that we have in the twenty thirteen policy, city events were were an allowable use. That continues to be the case in the twenty twenty-five policy, is it is governmental speech. The city sponsored events also were allowed in the twenty thirteen policy. In the twenty twenty-five policy, though, if it is not governmental, if it's not a city event or an other governmental event, then that would require council approval. Twenty thirteen policy, there was, it was allowed to have nonprofit events, free or paid, that were open to the public. The twenty-five twenty-five policy disallows that. Other community groups. Also, there were conditions that would be disallowed in the twenty twenty-five policy. Governmental entities, it wasn't really specified in twenty thirteen policy, but in the twenty twenty-five policy, it requires that agreement that we put into place for other governmental entities. Some awesome administrative and approval shifts between the policies. The application review previously was city supervisor designate. The new policy designates the public works director designate. Fee waiver authority used to sit with the city supervisor. Under the new policy, it would sit with the city council. Sponsor event definition was not defined, and now it would be up to the city council to determine if it was something they wanted to sponsor. And by sponsorship, in this specific instance, I am talking about the utilization of the space, the the allowance of the utilization of the city's space. And so in that way, this, it's the city determining that that's a sponsored message that they're that they're allowing to be utilized in that space. The the fee waiver authority would be the monetary waiver that the council would also have at their discretion if that was something that they decided to do within this policy. And then the reserved event periods, in the previous policy, we just provided prioritization to the University of Idaho for their events. In this policy, we specifically line out the events that would be prioritized. And so it just calls out the specific events, which are their their big events, you know, commencement, homecoming, Jazz Fest, those types of events. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions that you might have about the proposed updates to the banner policy.
Thank you, Tyler. On your previous slide, and and just for the sake of clarity, this came to all of us through the Public Works and Finance Committee, you know, a handful of weeks ago, and we decided to bring it to full council because we thought that it was that that would be a wise idea for all of us to have a discussion. And we got hung up on that terminology of sponsorship. And I think the way you just And I think the way you just phrased it and described it was really, really helpful. And so I was hoping that you could just repeat yourself one more time for further clarification.
Yeah.
On how to under like on how to understand the sponsor. Because we in Public Works and Finance, we got hung up on that on that word in particular.
Yeah, I I think I think so. The distinction that that we're making here is that there are there are basically two forms. There there are two things that could come before the council for the council's consideration. Um and one could be a fee waiver, and that could be for another governmental entity. For example, the University of Idaho, under this, the agreement that we established in the University of Idaho would likely have fees that would cover the city's costs for implementing the program um as the university benefits from their visibility within within the city system. And so that could include fees. So the council could have the ability to consider the waiver of fees that would be levied within the program and within the fee schedule for a or they could be approached with an application for the utilization of the space. And if it was a non-governmental, non-preapproved, then that would not fall under my purview as public works director to approve that. That would need to come to the council because it would fall outside of what has been established by the council as generally in with a blanket uh uh um approval in the policy. And so then those those types of events would be up to the council for their approval. And just I pulled the last three years up for example, um just just for context, for the kind of utilization that we've had in the program. In twenty twenty three, of the twenty one banners displayed for the over street banners, there were only three that weren't non-government that were not that would fall under the non-governmental category, that wouldn't fall under the approval, the blanket approval by the council, as long as the other provisions within the policy were met. Of the small banners, the pole banners is what I'm talking about in this instance, two of the three installations would fall under that category. Um and so in in that year, uh the two of the three, the the two were rendezvous in the park and then the common tone chamber music festival, where the other two that utilized it, the third was um the jazz festival. Um so with the utilization, we've had far lower utilization of the event spaces for the small banners. In twenty twenty four, um of twenty two over the street banners, two would have fallen into the category that were that would be non-governmental. Um and and I just if you'd like some examples of those, it was in twenty twenty three, it was the Pluse Patches, rendezvous in the park, and then the League of Women Voters. Um and then in twenty in twenty four, it was again rendezvous in the park and the League of Women Voters. And that was also the case in twenty five. Those were the two was rendezvous in the park, League of Women Voters. Um and the small banners, one of two, so fifty percent of the small banner displays in twenty five were would have fallen under that category. One was Jazz Fest and the other was rendezvous.
A weird question on that. Oh, you're looking at her like Bill or have something to say, I was like all ready to stop. If the League of Women Voters are talking about voting, how's that non-governmental?
The League of Women Voters is not a governmental entity.
Right, but they're talking about governmental issues.
And so that would be up that would be up to the council to make that determination. Since it's not a governmental entity, we wouldn't, under this policy, be able to enter into an agreement with the League of Women Voters like we could with the University of Idaho or the Moscow School District, for example. And so the under this policy, the way it's currently drafted, then that would that would come to the council for approval.
Thanks.
I I just think this is a can of worms, and I would rather be clear and just be governmental uh speech and not and not have it be up to the council every time somebody wants to have a something with banners. And I know that that's unfortunate for people who already have had banners in the past, but um I just think it it's gonna then depend on the whim and the makeup of the council about whether or not some group or another group can have banners. That is my two cents. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, I have some thoughts. I I hear you, Julia. But shifting slightly Tyler, I'm sorry, I uh I was coming back last night, and so I was looking on my phone. So I thought I reviewed everything on here, but um I it's my own not doing my due diligence that knowing, so I would have emailed you if I know this. So there's a couple, these aren't meant to be like curveballs, you know, or sliders or anything. But um so so my my question is if it's not a city sponsored event, when we're using city equipment and staff personnel, are 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 those entities going to be paying for that? Is there a fee structure for us if it takes, um you know, our truck where we lift up the hoist? Um are they going to be paying gas for that? Um are they going to be paying for the labor that's included in that? Um what I I don't, I'm not seeing that that's the case is.
The the fee schedule that actually came before the council tonight includes a fee for banner installation. That's for both over street and for pole banners, and that does account for both equipment utilization and staff time.
So they would be expecting no matter what the case is um for that.
That would obviously in the city situation, then it's 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 part of the city's cost. But it but if it was an outside entity, then the expectation would be either that they would bear the cost or that they would seek a waiver of said fee from the city council.
Mentioned that we don't ever want to do that to groups. So.
The current makeup of council has.
So all so just so like if rendezvous came, they'd have to be paying more than what they were in the past.
Rendezvous would have to come first to the council just to be able to utilize the space because they're not a governmental entity. And so rendezvous would, under the current, under the way the policy is currently drafted, rendezvous would have to approach the council for sponsorship of utilization of the space.
Because sponsorship equals using the space.
And then and then they could also, in addition to, they could apply for a fee waiver from the council would be a separate consideration to the council. So the first thing the council would consider is, is this going to be allowable government speech to utilize this space? And then the sec secondarily, it would be if if they were, if the council was asked, do we want to waive the fee for that utilization? And those are two separate questions within this policy that would both have to come before the council.
So so for example, if like um Cal Ripken had a baseball championship here, right? Um and Big Dale bringing a lot of revenue to the city, um they wanted to put banners up, they'd have to come, that organization would have to come before council. And then not only we'd have to agree if that is what what we'd be sponsoring for that space. And then they'd have to be paying for the fee of installation and take down of those banners.
Unless that was waived, unless they solicited a waiver from council and council waived it. But yes, we would, we would apply the fees as per the fee schedule. If if council approved the utilization of the space and there wasn't a request for a waiver of the fees or a granting of the waiver of the fees, then we would apply the fees as per the fee schedule.
I've got a question too. Sorry, Drew, I didn't even cut you off.
No, I just, I think we've set a strong precedent on to waive fees.
So Bryce, you were. Okay, Sandra.
Thanks, so um. So let's, I'm gonna go back to the Cal Ripken example. So maybe we're all baseball fans up here, like, yep, Cal Ripken, wahoo. Oh, my gosh, I hate ice skaters. We don't like the ice skaters. We're not gonna, we're gonna like, no banner for ice skaters, we just don't like them. That's legal? Is that okay? It seems squishy ground. It seems like we might have all ice skaters coming after us and suing us or cutting us with their skates. I don't know. How do we, how do we uh? Where's the balance? And I'm worried about that. I'm worried about the balance and the lick of balance. No offense to the ice skaters out there.
Don't come at her.
Go cracking.
The the current policy certainly leaves subjectivity, and and that subjectivity is put on the council to determine what the council decides is governmental speech or governmental supported speech. Um and so there there is subjectivity, and there's there's just no avoiding that within that policy. There's there's the, it really just comes down to the council will be left with some decisions to make if that, if they want to retain that ability within the policy or they won't. And and so that's uh really kind of what it boils down to is all governmental, or there is the ability for the council to make some subjective decisions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I I think uh staff took a look at something from twenty thirteen and provided an updated policy from twenty to twenty twenty five. The makeup of council will change. The makeup of Cal Ripken versus um ice skating may change over the years. Uh I think it is in, I think it is the responsible thing to do is to leave the subjectivity to council and assume that if there were things in question that we would seek our own private counsel, or not private counsel, but you know, trust staff to also guide us to provide information needed to making an informed decision, which is no different than any other decision we've made every other time where we do the work, we show up, we make sure we understand what's at stake, we make sure we understand our responsibility to our constituents, to the budget, to state statute, to each other. Uh and so I do think if we are going to anticipate and meet the needs of a diverse population and in order to build public trust, the trust, the public trust aspect within the mission statement comes back to being a transparent and accessible organization. And I think if we were to, if if I'm understanding what Julia's perspective or suggestion is, or the worms, if we can keep the lid of worms on, which would be to say government institution only and not have an avenue for an appeal, I'm not sure that feels good either.
I could flip your argument around completely, though, on that and say if we are want to be transparent and really uphold what's up there, then we have to be really careful about only going with Cal Ripken or ice skaters or dogs versus cats, or however you want to put it out. And be like, the best thing to do is to only do governmental. So we are representing everybody, and it's not. And we are being transparent and saying this is how it is, this is all it is, right? So argument works both ways.
I mean, we could have, you know, the the Idaho Satanist Society say, hey, we're having a big convention here, we're gonna bring in a lot of money, and we want to put banners up. And um and you let Cal Ripken do it, so you should treat us the same.
So, Mr. Mayor, if there's enough heartburn over this and there's enough interest from council to dial, to completely strip back the appeal piece and only restrict it to the events under F, the four things on page three on the draft, uh that mean like, is that what the taking other action is deemed appropriate would be? It sounds like no one's super stoked on, I'm happy with it as is, but it sounds like it's may not pass if I make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, just one thing that Haley is uh under, it 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 could be stripped down to F, but section F is just a prioritization. It it indicates that those are the ones that we will annually reserve for the University of Idaho. The the governmental speech could still have us enter into, would still allow for other, for example, the Moscow Bears or something.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I think we're looking at two different Fs. I think he was looking at section two F, which refers to the city sponsored events.
Oh.
I, no, but I can say that. I was looking at Tyler's list, um but maybe that's the one I was more referencing, which is like if 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 Julia wants to not, if if this feels like a can of worms, what can be stripped back to only say government?
Sure, so it's it's in a number of different locations. So I mean, that's an easy and it's an easy change for us to make. It's in section one, it's in section two A, it's gonna be in section, we're just gonna, you know, remove any reference to city sponsored event and just contain it to city and governmental events. Um so it'd be a fairly easy change to make if that's what the council would like to see.
We need to make a motion to do that and then make a motion to pass it.
My preference would be just to give staff direction to revise the policy, bring it back to the council and to eliminate the reference to city sponsored events. It's it's in, you know, it's in about eight different locations. I think it'd be better just to bring a clean one.
I agree, I don't like group headings.
It won't have to be a, you know, next meeting, it won't have to be a long consideration because it'll be a pretty quick, uh since we've already had the the discussion deliberation tonight. So um I that'd be my preference.
So, Mr. Mayor, to to just reclarify if that would meet the intention of what we're talking about. The intention would be we are defining, there are the four definitions that Tyler walked us through as far as public forum.
Three F.
Three F, thank you. And we are saying, we are saying that by by define, like, in essence, these are about to be um I'm sorry, I'm looking for the, it's like the legal definitions of what public forums are. We're saying that we the over the street banner locations, the two that we have and the lightbulb locations will only be for city designated for other government agency.
Corrected in that it's not intended to create a public forum.
And it is not.
But but so none of that will change, all that will remain consistent.
I just want to make sure that that's the intention that we're describing, which is it's going to stay not a public forum, okay?
And and just a a brief clarification that regardless of this council's a bit uh decision on whether or not to allow the council to sponsor, it is still not a public forum. This is this is still, the 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 policy still establishes this is not a public forum, is restricted for governmental use and governmental speech. What the policy currently as written does is allows the council the ability to determine that they want to sponsor some speech within that space that they feel like is in alignment with government speech that the council deems appropriate.
That's crazy and a can of worms.
Uh yeah, me too.
Okay, so it sounds like everybody's leaning towards restricted to strictly government speech with no reaching outside and deeming other outside agencies or entities is having a government effect with permission of council. So just limit it to the government agencies. Capped.
That's my preference.
I guess to that end, just for clarification, can you go back to the slide that you have twenty thirteen twenty, that one, that's the one I went. I'm just curious, what were the conditions on the other community groups?
Um so there were, there was a series of conditions, and some of those spurred actually the revision of this policy. Some of it had to do with advertising. Um and so it was, it was if it was a a an event open to the public. And so if someone had a private event, for example, that was that was disallowed. And so there were conditions that it had, they had to meet certain conditions. It had to be, it had to be an 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 event that was open to the public, that was accessible to people that, you know, and then so there was a series of things that they had to meet. And then then there was prioritization granted for free events versus paid events. Um and so there there were a series of conditions within that.
And I and I appreciate that because that's that's helpful, especially to think about like the League of Women Voters can deforms and stuff like that.
The Patches.
Right, like like.
Patches.
Yeah, um of the of the being open to the public, I feel like that, uh that's one of those things in the weeds that maybe just wasn't super clear, so I'm happy to hear that.
And again, some of those conditions create complications because we have to regulate speech as being content neutral. And so the organization or whether it's open to the public and those criteria can be problematic.
And we were also running into some of the issues that we ran into was also just yet, the the advertising versus advertising of something versus advertising of an event. And so there became questions about just general utilization of that space for advertising of the entity itself rather than advertising an event that they were hoping people would come to. And so that was that started to become far more difficult on the staff level. You know, you see things that sure smell like just a general advertisement for something versus an announcement of an event.
Mr. Mayor, I'm comfortable.
Do you want to direct staff in that direction?
That, yeah, I mean.
Do we need a motion or just direction?
A motion would be great, and just a motion to direct staff to revise the proposed policy and resolution to remove reference to city sponsored events.
Okay, I'll I'll move that we uh send this back to staff to revise the policy to only allow for government entities to utilize our banners. Is that okay?
I think removing reference to city sponsored events would be best because it's all government speech as it is currently, just if we could just get direction to remove.
Somebody else is weighing in.
Nobody likes us.
Anyhow, if if we just move revise, remove reference to city sponsored events, I think that's the cleanest.
But I think we're gonna have to discuss it when it gets here. I'm with you on this. I'm not sure that this is gonna meet all of my trepidation.
I move that we send this back to staff to remove all references to city sponsored events.
And Drew seconds. So Bryce.
Hi.
Drew.
Hi.
Gina. Haley.
In the interest of the proper role of government, aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Okay. So that takes us to the end of the regular agenda.
Thanks, Taylor.
That was easier, I got I I made more sense this time around, so I'm hopeful.
Third time's a charm.
Okay, reports. Julia.
Uh this week, we have Fair and Affordable Housing Commission. Uh, this week, we have Fair and Affordable Housing Commission on Thursday, feel free to join us, and I have spent the last couple of weeks working on affordable housing and having some meetings with different people involved in that realm of our community and the Pullman community. If I, if you'll indulge me, I would like to say that August 15th, which is Friday, from five to seven, I will be sponsoring Pubbin' on the Patio at PCEI, and, and take notes, we will be raising money for the Moscow High School Cross Country Team. And even better, one of the ways we'll be raising money is that if you have tennis shoes that you no longer wear, you can bring them and we will send them to be recycled. Any tennis shoe will be recycled, and then based on how nice they are, they'll get from $1 to $7 from the company that does the recycling. So bring your old tennis shoes, I know if you're like me, you've got like your running shoes, the old running shoes that you walk in, the like, well, I can cut the grass in these shoes, and then I have one pair that, they're just my favorite color, you know? So anyway, round up your running shoes and bring them out to PCEI on Friday, August 15th, and we will help raise some money for Moscow High School Cross Country Team. That's all I got.
True.
Yeah, so it's been pretty light, last couple of weeks, there's been some things canceled, but I did attend Historic Preservation last week there. We had Idaho's, Idaho State Historic Preservation Agency here talking to us about kind of a myriad of different things they're doing throughout the state, and giving that commission some ideas for future projects. They're also working towards their big event each year, the Orchid Awards. I wish they'd give onions too, but that's for another conversation. But they'll just be handing out orchids this year, and so staff, or not staff, commission members are working towards that pretty diligently, and so I'll keep you posted on, they have a date, but I'll announce it next time. They'll be at the 1912 Center for things coming up this week, at Farmer's Market tomorrow, that's kind of been on a summer sabbatical, because they've been in the heat of Farmer's Market, so we'll be meeting again and start gradually picking up pace as we talk about things that the commission has experienced over this last, during, and currently during this last market. We also have, I believe it's the sixth, so it's this week that we have the, yeah, this Wednesday, the county university.
City, county, university.
Breakfast.
Leadership breakfast.
Yeah, leadership breakfast.
Bright and early.
Yeah, bright and early. So I'll be attending that, and then we'll also, I've just been enjoying a lot of our great public amenities, so I've been hanging out at the pool a lot, a lot of our great parks, and grateful, this is why I like living here. I'm at the pool more times than I can count, usually, well, I can count to six, so, six days a week, so, with my kids.
And you use sunscreen, because you're not summer, nice job.
Don't get too close. My nose is recovering, but, yeah, so.
That's all for reports, Mr. Mayor.
Sandra.
Uh, let's see, I think it was last Sunday, I got to scoop ice cream, and with a couple of our county commissioners at the Leita County Historical Society Ice Cream Social, and this was the first time I've been there that it wasn't 8,000 degrees.
No kidding.
It was okay. So that was, that was a very pleasant surprise that was not hot. Yesterday, I went to the Peter Pan play put on at the UI Theater with the youth, and it was delightful. It was really, yeah, it was great, great, they did all the setting, they did the scenes, they made their props, the alligator was amazing. I was in awe of the alligator, I just, if you can get pictures and see this alligator they made, it'll knock your socks off, unless you're wearing flip flops, it'll knock your flip flops off. Let's see, we have URA coming up on Thursday.
Budget?
Yep, yep, so that'll be fun, and I forgot my readers, so, I know art's going to get into this, but we have new fire students here, so that's all I'm going to say about that, because I'll let the mayor talk about that. And then just because I know everyone out there is excited about this as I am, September 7th is Howling at the Hamilton, so I don't have a time on that yet, usually it's like, it's early, but, I mean, not early, not like 6:00 AM, like, warm enough to go to the pool unless it's raining, but put it on your calendar, September 7th, I will keep you updated on this best event in all of the world.
Okay, Gina.
The best event in all of the world, that's awesome. Okay, except that tomorrow's the tree commission, so that just beats your event. Tomorrow is the tree commission, and I'm looking forward to it, it'll be interesting to see what we do as a, as an organization with the changes in the fees that Bryce brought up, and, and I have no doubt that what we can't purchase, we can propagate, because we are the tree commission. I will, if you'll indulge me like you've indulged the rest of my compatriots, I will be school shopping with three of my granddaughters this weekend. So look out, Old Navy. It's going to be awesome. That's all I have.
Bryce, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty short and sweet on my end, since our last council meeting, admin committee was cancelled on the 28th, and then last Tuesday, a handful of us met with the Lieutenant Governor of Idaho for a little roundtable with some county commissioners and some other stakeholders in the community, and it was great to have some access and some conversations with him, and continue to advocate for Moscow and local municipalities and local municipality control at that. But it was great, it was a great chat. And then last week, I participated, me and the mayor were golf cart buddies in the mayor's golf tournament, and much to the chagrin, do you want me to steal your thunder?
Go ahead.
All right, much to the chagrin of the mayor, we did not come in last place. We act, we actually did pretty good.
Tied for fourth out of 23 teams.
Who'd you have besides you two? Who else went along?
Ringers.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor held, held his own, and we utilized his shots well, so.
Which kind of shots are you talking about?
It was a great day.
If mayor was on the team, would you guys take him first?
No, they carried us.
Yeah, and so that was, that was a great event to see so many show up for that, that event, and just how it does help out a local nonprofit as well, so it was, it was a good Friday last week. And then yesterday, I was out in Seattle, actually, because it was Vandal Day at the T-Bone Park for the Mariners game, which the Mariners won, which was cool. And it was really awesome, there was over 1,000 folks that went out there for Vandal Day, and your ticket included a jersey that was pretty cool, had a little vandal logo on it, and it just was great to see kind of the community, you know, be outside of the Palouse, clearly, right? And, and see people be excited to talk about their time in Moscow, if they went to school here, still live here, somewhere else in the Northwest, it just, it was, it was really fun, yeah, it was a really fun day, so, that's all.
Haley.
Uh, okay, forward-looking first, tomorrow is National Night Out, hosted by the Moscow Police Department downtown from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, so hope to see you there, you can come meet Ragnar, or police vehicles and all that jazz.
Six to eight, Haley.
Six to eight on Main Street, I think between 3rd and 6th. Yes. So please, please, please come visit. Other forward-looking thing this week, with a great program idea from Betsy at Parks and Rec, a gear swap, a Utes gear swap, gear swap for the Utes. You drop off any outgrown gear at the HERC Monday through Friday of this week, and then on Saturday, stop in Shin guards, mitts, whatever, from 9:30 to 11:00 AM, and so I thought that was a great idea. As always, there's a code, there's a call for coaches and refs, I think, for, looking for micro soccer and that's what I can remember, micro soccer.
Volleyball, maybe?
Yeah, I think I remember what we synced up with the, I'm actually thinking it may be adult. I can't remember, anyway. Check out, and, oh, but Parks and Rec started a Facebook page, and so they have clear, beautiful graphics to explain what, I can't remember for call for coaches. The last update that I actually was really happy to see go away, the Fun Run at the Pool has survived for like 20 seasons, mind you, I think that might be, I remember that one from like my elementary school days. It was put to rest, there is a patch that cannot be patched any longer, and so I really appreciate that, because it's like, it's always during prime time, but there's a lot of really, really sad kids, and so Betsy and the team are working on plans for replacement equipment, and I'll be a little sad when it comes back, but it's fine, it's, it's fine, it's not for everyone. Lieutenant Governor meeting was great, 7:00 AM breakfast, and I was in Boise for Hyaldie this weekend, for, I've never been, yeah, I saw your picture, I was like, I wonder, anyway, Hyaldie, the Bass Festival, first time in 10 years, I think, he had hosted it, it was a hoot, and it was great, there was dancing, and Kelly Mochos, and Choriso, and it's great. I love our town, though, we drove home and it was a constant stream of cars from Boise to Cascade, actually McCall, which isn't a surprise, but the friends we drove with had never been to Boise, and they were like, wow, it's really busy, I was like, yeah, can't wait to go home, so. Uh, that's all I got, Mayor, all you.
Okay. On the 28th, we had a pending, two new officers on the police force, which is bringing us incrementally closer to getting to full staff on the police. We met with Lieutenant Governor Bettke and Representative McCann in here, it was a little bit like Festivus with the airing of the grievances, but hopefully we'll get a little traction out of that. The airport board met on the 30th, and the airport is pursuing a, the establishment of a 501(c)(6) organization to lobby the airlines for air service enhancement, to do the things that the airport itself can't do, actively lobbying airlines to bring in new routes, new planes, new providers. On the 31st, our head of sanitation, Tim Davis, retired, and so he's put in, I think, 29 years with the city.
Wow.
Liking to forever. Yeah, so just forever. He knew a lot about sanitation and really helped us with all of these various contracts. The golf tournament went well, the beneficiary will be at the Leita Recovery Center this year, so as soon as all of the finances get worked through, we'll have a presentation of the ginormous check sometime probably early October. Also, this very morning, met out at Fire Station Number Three with all of the new resident firefighters, we got nine new firefighters that have come in to bolster the ranks of the people who are really and truly the first responders. So if you see somebody who looks particularly young driving a giant fire truck around, that would be one of them practicing so they can get to the scene safely and quickly, and for that, you need practice. And this afternoon, went out and spoke with the Rotary Club people for 45 minutes on issues currently facing the city and looking over the horizon to what we're planning into the future. And that's what I was up to, anything from staff other than the Wednesday?
Nope, nothing from staff.
Okay, Hark.
I move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're done.